And I will state that we are live captioning our meeting, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I called to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of February 14, 2023. A date that resonates throughout Arizona is the date of Arizona's anniversary of statehood. Thank you, Dr. Norene, for remindings about that. Though our work sessions are not mandatory, for the record, I will call roll of board members and I will start with Mr. Burnett, our student trustee. Are you present?
I am present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
I'm here.
Great, Ms. Davis.
I'm here.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Present.
Thank you. With my presence, we are all in attendance. That's a number of seven, and our student trustee is also present. Thank you. We have one item on our agenda today for the work session, and that is a discussion of financial aid. We've had this on our calendar for several months now because it's a topic I know that so many of us want to have more knowledge about and also have an opportunity to ask some questions. And with that, Dr. Gonzalez, would you introduce us to our presenters this afternoon?
Absolutely, President Sullivan, and good afternoon to you and the other board members that are with us this afternoon and to everybody else who is listening today. We're looking forward to this opportunity, long awaited, to talk about financial aid and what it means for our district and what it means for our students and some of those processes. Very complex process overall, so we're trying to, understanding that we've got limited time here, but we're more than happy to come back as many times as needed to answer questions and so forth. And so we anticipate that there'll be more questions that come out of this, and we're going to be able to provide those to you. But we want to give you an overall understanding so that when we talk about and use some of the terms that we use around financial aid, you might have a better understanding after this than you do coming into it. So our presenters are, we've got several. We wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to hear from different levels within our organization and people who are, I would say, are on the front line of the financial aid process and others who are a part of it from a systems level. So we have our acting provost, Patina Salas, who will be presenting, Dr. Keisha Brock, our Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, Elizabeth Carlin, our Financial Aid Director at South Mountain, Catherine Johnson, the Financial Aid Director at Paradise Valley, Annette Lenders, who's the District Director of Financial Aid, Meredith Abrams, our Associate District Director of Compliance Reporting. And then I also want to recognize the major contributors to this are Lauren Lindenberg, Stephanie Hopple, Matt Askcraft, all of whom work in our area of institutional effectiveness and data and analytics and such. And so with that, President Sullivan, I'm going to turn it over to Patina to take it from here.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Good afternoon, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC member and guest. I'm very pleased to introduce this afternoon's work session on financial aid. As Mrs. Sullivan shared, she requested a theme song for this afternoon's session, and so we've selected two. The first song is "Money" by Pink Floyd, because, well, money. And second, in honor of the people who do the work serving our students, "You've Got a Friend" by Carole King.
Those are great. Thanks.
Yeah, so as you may know, financial aid is a very complex topic. So for this afternoon's session, we've set aside about 45 minutes for the presentation and about 30 minutes at the end for questions. In addition to today's presentation, the team's also developed a supplemental document that will, for reference, that we distributed a little bit earlier today that you'll have kind of to be able to refer back to after the session or as you have additional questions as we move on. Presentations like today's would not be possible without the ongoing collaboration between the colleges and system-level teams. As Dr. Gonzalez shared, we have a number of collaborators in today's presentation, but also the work of the Financial Aid Director system-wide and all our financial aid professionals, both at the district office and at our colleges. So without further ado, and in the iconic words of Carole King, "Isn't it good to know you've got a friend?" I will turn it over to my friend and colleague, Dr. Keisha Brock.
Thank you, Provost Salas. Good afternoon, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and guests. My name is Keisha Brock, and I serve as the Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs for the district office. I'm excited to start the work session this afternoon with a brief overview of topics we plan to cover. And also, if you could move to slide, the next slide. One more. There we go. I want to provide a brief overview of the topics we plan to cover and then provide you with some high-level information of Maricopa financial aid by the numbers. So as you look at this agenda, you can see that we have a lot of topics to cover. This is going to be a very cursory overview of a very complex topic that's governed by volumes of regulations. Next slide, Elsa. Before we begin, I wanted to make sure that we look at financial aid in the context of the student lifecycle. Sometimes financial aid is thought of as something that is transactional or that only impacts one component of the student journey. However, financial aid professionals at each of the 10 Maricopa colleges and at the district office engage with students at all stages of the student lifecycle, from the point they're connecting with the institution and considering how to pay for college, through to completion of a credential, and then when they're into the workforce, if they took loans out to help them with financial literacy and student loan repayment. Students connect with Maricopa professionals in numerous ways, including through chat, MyInfo, chatbots, texts, virtual appointments, and student surveys. Next slide, Elsa. Speaking of student surveys, we conduct a student intake survey as a component of the work we are doing to support student retention through our guided pathways effort. As you can see from that survey, 43% of incoming students indicate that they plan to pay for college using financial aid. Next slide. However, a few less than that, around 40%, which you can't see on the slide, but 40% apply for financial aid using the FAFSA or the Family Application for Federal Student Aid. And that number that actually then receives some type of financial aid from Maricopa is much smaller. It's 33% of our total student population less dual enrollment. You can see from this particular slide that that number has declined over the last five years. And this is one area that we have identified that we need to dive in and do more research. However, we do know that this is not unusual in the state of Arizona. Next slide, please, Elsa. Unfortunately, the state of Arizona ranks 48th of 50 in terms of the percentage of high school seniors who complete the FAFSA. It's important to note here that Maricopa is engaged in a number of local and statewide efforts to increase FAFSA completion of high school seniors, and we're looking to expand that beyond the high school seniors, which is what's measured in this particular dataset, to returning adults as well. So some of the examples of what we're engaged in is all of our colleges offer FAFSA workshops at feeder high schools, and the system-level team provides one-on-one virtual FAFSA appointments in Spanish and in English to help students fill out the FAFSA. Next slide. So the low FAFSA completion rate, along with the low percentage of our overall student population who are actually receiving financial aid, becomes more evident as you look at peer-institution comparisons. This is pulled from iPad's data from a group of peer institutions that our enterprise analytics team has developed. And you can see who those institutions are if you reference that supplemental sheet that we gave you access to. So if you take a look at this, only 24% of Maricopa students receive a Pell Grant compared to 32% of the iPad's data nationally. Now, the reason this will look different than a little data moving on is this is a Fall '20 data comparison. iPad's data, when we try and do peer comparisons, it lags behind. So we had to look back in order to give you this comparison. But the data we're going to present for the remainder of the slide is current, or the remainder of the presentation. Next slide, Elsa. So if we break our financial aid for Fall '22 down a little bit, of that 33% of our student population who borrowed some type of aid, you can see that almost 78% of those students, if you combine scholarships and grants, were able to pay for college with the support of money that they will not need to repay. And only 21% of those, of that 33% actually had to borrow to attend college. Next slide. And then if we break that down a little further, you can see that around, that we have awarded a lot of aid. In the '21-'22 academic year, we awarded over $81 million in grants, $29 million in loans. And I think the $12 million is a really solid number, although you'll see from my last slide that we definitely need to work to increase that. But of that $12 million, around $8 million is the Maricopa Grant Fund, and then the foundation scholarships totaled nearly $3 million. So we do a lot of work to support students through this process. Next slide, Elsa. So this last slide that I'm going to talk about in terms of data looks at the gap or the unmet need for our students. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about what, how the federal government defines that. And then later on, when Liz is presenting, or I'm sorry, it'll be Catherine presenting, you will see what the, what the unmet need is according to the federal government's definition. So a financial aid gap is when financial aid awards do not meet the student's financial need. So that would be cost of attendance, which you're going to learn a lot about today, minus the estimated family contribution, minus the financial aid they receive, and then what is remaining is what is their unmet need. Lately, we've been able to do a lot of work with last-dollar programs, last-dollar-end programs, like the Phoenix Promise. And we've had to come up with different calculations based on those programs. Most of those programs only calculate the unmet need using direct costs, which would be, in this instance, on this slide, tuition plus direct course fees. And they use that instead of cost of attendance, so that takes out things like transportation, et cetera, because again, these are last-dollar-end programs. And then they look at what is applied in terms of need-based aid, so need-based or merit-based aid, not in terms of things that they might have to pay back in the future. So as you can see, if we look at that definition, which we've been using a lot lately to support some of these last-dollar-end programs, about 12% of our students have some unmet need, and it looks like that totals about $3 million. So if you look at this through the lens of what we can do to meet that, that gap, we need to do more work with our college development offices. And I know the foundation, for example, is working on a student support initiative to close or help close that $3.5 million gap. And with that, that gives you a really high-level overview of some of the data. And now I'm going to pass the presentation to Elizabeth Carlin from South Mountain Community College. Next slide, Elsa, and then I will turn it to Elizabeth.
Thank you, Keisha, and good afternoon, everyone. Elizabeth Carlin here, Financial Aid Director at South Mountain Community College. I'm very happy to be here today. And this slide here, we just want to emphasize the fact that financial aid, the financial aid process, is a very fluid process. So oftentimes, students begin this financial aid process prior to actually becoming students at our campuses. Sometimes the process begins while they're already attending, because that's when they realize, oh, wow, I need to use financial aid or I have some kind of need. And this process also goes well beyond graduation. There are many times when we are still working with past students for loans and, you know, different consolidations and things like that. So the process is very fluid. Eligibility can fluctuate year after year. These are some of the words on this slide here that can cause an impact on students' financial aid eligibility when we're trying to determine it and when a student completes the free application for federal student aid. So as we in financial aid have coined the term, it depends. It truly does depend, right? It depends on so many different factors, so many different things, different years, the student's current situation, the student's past situation. So it depends. Everything depends for students in financial aid. Next slide, please. This slide here gives you an idea of the types of financial aid that we have available for our students here at our Maricopa district. So you will see on here that we have Maricopa-specific aid, which is grants, scholarships, and work-study. We also have state aid, and then federal. Under federal, we have grant aid and loan aid. And you'll see on this slide here that we've gone ahead and highlighted or boxed the section under federal for grant aid and loans, meaning that this is the only type of aid that is not on a first-come, first-served basis. So this means that as long as the student completes their FAFSA and they're eligible for this type of aid, this is aid that's guaranteed through Department of Education as long as they are eligible. And then, of course, students also have the ability to apply for private loans and scholarships. Next slide, please. In this slide here, we wanted to give you an idea of what the maximum amounts, a maximum amount of awards could be for this upcoming award year of '23-'24. So for example, a student that is full Pell Grant eligible, the maximum Pell Grant amount that the student would be eligible for this upcoming year would be $7,395. And the maximum lifetime eligibility for students to use Pell, as long as they are eligible, is six years, or what we call 600% in financial aid. Students that are full Pell Grant eligible could also be eligible for a federal SEOG grant. So that's the Federal Supplemental Opportunity Grant for a maximum of $1,000 per year. We usually do 500 each semester. And then, of course, if students are wanting to look at borrowing student loans, we have here what the amounts that students would be eligible for as a grade level one student for a subsidized loan and unsubsidized loan, as well as a grade level two. And we also have the maximum aggregate limits that students would be able to borrow throughout their lifetime. So for both loans combined, the maximum is $57,500, with no more than $23,000 of that coming from a subsidized loan if the students are eligible. Next slide, please. All right, so cost of attendance. Cost of attendance is a federal requirement under the Education, the Higher Education Act of 65, Section 472. The purpose of the cost of attendance, which we also oftentimes call a budget, is for colleges to determine what will be reasonably, what it will be reasonably cost students to attend college or university. So the cost of attendance or financial aid budget is the official budget that is used to award federal, state, institutional, and private student aid. And the budget awards are reported to the Department of Education and used to confirm compliance with federal regulation. Next slide, please. Cost of attendance, these are some of the examples of what is included in the cost of attendance. So we have the direct costs, which are tuition and fees. And then we have what we call the indirect costs, which are books and supplies, living expenses, personal expenses, transportation. And we also have some of the additional costs that could potentially be included, depending, of course, on the student's situation, which are childcare, exam fees, study abroad, and medical. And down below, you'll see what the Maricopa cost of attendance is for this upcoming AY-24 year, which is $25,236. Next slide, please. All right, so how do we calculate the cost of attendance? So what we do at Maricopa is we take the weighted tuition, fees, and book costs in order to determine what that will be for two separate groups. Group number one is a group of students where tuition costs less than $200 per credit. So those would be like our in-state students, the $85 per credit hour. And we have group two, which is for students with tuition costs greater than $200, so for example, out-of-state students. We also use the Economic Policy Institute, the EPI, in order to determine transportation, housing, and personal and childcare costs for our students. Next slide, please. All right, so here we're going through an example of what the cost of attendance would look like. Now, in order for us to determine the cost of attendance, we also have to look at what the expected family contribution number is, which is what we call the EFC. Now, the expected family contribution number is an index number used to determine students' eligibility for need-based financial aid. So this is the number that we, as a campus, look at once the student completes their FAFSA to determine what we can award students. So in these examples here, this is a student whose cost of attendance is listed here. So they have books and supplies, loan fees, their personal, their food and housing, transportation, tuition and fees, and the total cost of attendance of $25,236. In the box to the left, you see that this student has an EFC of zero, meaning that they qualify for the maximum amount of Pell Grant. What we do is we take the EFC and deduct it from the total cost of attendance to determine the student's gross financial need. Now, on the second box to the right, you'll see that the cost of attendance amounts are the same. The difference here is that this student has an EFC of $7,000, which is then deducted from the total cost of attendance to give us the gross financial aid need. So this number, as you can see, is lower than the first example. So the student is still eligible for some need-based awards. Unfortunately, not for Pell Grant due to that number of EFC that's a little too high to receive Pell Grant. But the student would still be able to look at, for example, federal work-study possibly, and also a subsidized student loan. Next slide, please. All right, so now I'll pass it on to Meredith.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and good afternoon. My name is Meredith Abrams. I am the Associate District Director for Compliance Reporting. And today I'm going to discuss a little bit more about the net price calculator with you. The Higher Education Act of 1965 was amended in October of 2011, and it mandates that all Title IV institutions are required to post a net price calculator on their website. The calculator must utilize institutional-level data to provide an estimated net price as it pertains to current and prospective students based on their individualized circumstances. The intended purpose of this calculator is to use, is to be used as a consumer protection or disclosure tool. And while it uses institutional-level data, there are several key limitations to the tool as produced by the National Center for Education Statistics, or NCES, which we'll discuss a little bit more in detail to come. One of the primary, one of the primary limitations we've noticed is the data utilized to supply the calculator with the required elements includes institutional details broken down by individualized circumstances, such as the EFC that Elizabeth just mentioned. And in a future slide, we're going to see the level of stratification can ultimately result in empty data points, providing a vastly skewed view of a student's actual net price. Next slide, please. Thank you. The NCES has a series of required data elements that must be included in the net price calculator as it's posted to the institution's website. These include the cost of attendance elements, such as estimated cost of attendance, tuition and fees, room and board, books and supplies, and other expenses. And it also includes the estimated total grant aid a student may expect to receive. The final estimated net price is then the summation of the costs sans the estimated total grant aid. We also must provide the percent of the cohort that received financial aid and some caveats and disclaimers as indicated in the Higher Education Act. One point of interest, this is only a list of minimum data elements that must be included and are included in the online template provided by NCES. But at the institutional level, there is some flexibility to determine what, if any, other data elements the institution would find useful for the student and their family. Next slide, please, Elsa. As previously mentioned, we, there are some key limitations to the use of the net price calculator. For one, the cost data is based on our prior-year data for the institution. This can lead to significant variance from the actual budgeted financial aid amounts for the current student cohort. As our 10 institutions are individually accredited, we have to utilize college-specific cohorts to populate the net price calculators. This leads to significant variance in total grant aid across institutions. Given that the final net price listed on the tool amounts to the total, total estimated cost minus the total grant aid, this can be a challenge for students when they're comparing across Maricopa colleges. And then at Maricopa, we also know that most of our students are not first-time, full-time students, and this cohort accounts for only about 5% of our student population when we start to take into account students that have had prior higher education experience. The net price calculator does not account for variation among college populations. Elsa, can you move to the next slide, please? The net price calculator is a tool, and it can be used by prospective students to provide cost estimates that apply to full-time, first-time undergraduate degree-seeking students or certificate-seeking students at each institution. This is just one example of how the net price calculator works. This is, this isn't, this example comes from Chandler Gilbert, and it uses a very simplified set of questions to assess a student's EFC. This, this EFC is then used to capture the expected total grant aid as it's seen in the green box, that $1,435 total. On this slide, and next slide, please, Elsa. The example in the previous slide was for a 30-year-old, 30-year-old eligible for in-district tuition, living alone off-campus with no children and an income between $30,000 and $40,000, which puts their estimated EFC range between $7,500 and $10,000, and automatically pulls in the $1,435 total for the estimated total grant aid. To populate this table, the guidelines ask us to populate each of these boxes based on the average aid awarded to the first-time, full-time students stratified by EFC range on the left, the tuition structure and housing categories on top. If no students exist in a single category, as above, if you note all of those empty boxes, the estimated grant aid automatically turns to zero, which can be a challenge for students when they're utilizing this tool. We have started exploring some options in how to improve this matrix. The NCES guidelines do allow for the inclusion of more than one-year worth of student data if the matrix is too sparsely populated. Next slide, please, Elsa. If we were to modify our methodology to include multiple years' worth of data, we have, we will have more data points for use in the NPC calculator. We have started to explore what that might look like, and we do see some improvement in pulling more students into the matrix with two years. Next slide, please. You've been working on some improvements to the net price calculator as, as it exists on our Maricopa websites. First, we have added a link to the FAFSA within the NPC. And secondly, we're exploring the use of two or more years' worth of data to provide a larger cohort and reduce the number of zeros in the matrix above that we just saw. And we are also currently researching how to provide an improved tool that is a better fit for Maricopa students that still maintains meeting the federal guidelines and would, and what other data elements we might include in that kind of a tool. We are also working to update our NPC timeline to update in the spring after the submission of our iPad's reporting. With that, I'm going to go ahead and transition the presentation over to Catherine, who's going to give you a little bit more information about the student experience.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is Catherine Johnson, the Director of Financial Aid here at Paradise Valley. We wanted to walk you through some examples to kind of show you maybe what it would look like for some students. to kind of show you maybe what it would look like for some students here at Maricopa. So we have two students. We have Abby, who is what we're going to call our traditional-age student, right? Under 24, recent high school graduate. She is dependent for financial purposes, living at home. She is attending full-time, the first-time freshman here. And based on the financial aid application, the FAFSA that she and her family filled out, her expected family contribution is $7,000. The other student we're going to introduce you to is another common student that we have here at Maricopa, and this is Jamie. And Jamie is our non-traditional student, our older student. She's 28. She works full-time, as many of our students do, for financial aid purposes. She's considered independent. She is also attending full-time. She is a sophomore, so a second-year student. She is living off-campus, and based upon the information that she provided on her financial aid application, her expected family contribution is zero. As Elizabeth mentioned earlier in the slide, the expected family contribution is used to determine eligibility for grants and gift aid. If we go to our next slide, we can talk about Abby's financial aid package. Her cost of attendance, as a reminder, will include books and supplies, loan fees, personal, food and housing, transportation, and then, of course, the tuition and fees. So if you add all of those items up, her total cost of attendance is $20,000. Now, does that mean that that's exactly what it's going to cost for her to go to school? No, right? We try to incorporate enough things to help them cover what they need to do to be comfortable, right? So it's more than just tuition and books. Based on her expected family contribution, and as a reminder, it was $7,000, she would not be eligible for a federal Pell Grant because that's higher than what the federal government allows. However, she would be eligible to utilize the direct student loans. And so there are two different kinds that she'd be eligible to utilize in her name, the subsidized student loan, and then the unsubsidized student loan. And those are both a federal loan from the Department of Education. They're in her name. They're essentially guaranteed aid. The difference is, on the subsidized student loan, the interest that accrues on that loan is paid for by the government on behalf of the student while the student remains enrolled six credit hours or more. On an unsubsidized student loan, the interest that accrues on that loan is not covered by the government. The student would be responsible for that loan interest. So if you subtract from her cost of attendance, her expected family contribution, and her aid that she's eligible for, she would have an unmet need of $7,798. Again, it's important to understand that it doesn't mean that she has to have that $7,000. It just means that, based on the cost of attendance, she could receive other aid to help cover her costs up to that. The other aid could include a Maricopa grant if the college she's attending has those funds for students. It could include federal work-study if she chose to work. It could also include scholarships if she applied for private donor scholarships. If we advance to talk about our other student, Jamie, on the flip side, on the next slide here. So Jamie, her cost of attendance is a little bit higher, if you noticed. And that is because since Jamie is living off-campus, her food and housing is a little bit more, and her transportation's a little bit more. So her cost of attendance is about $5,000 more than Abby's was. And as a reminder, Jamie's expected family contribution was zero. So she's considered by the Department of Education to be a high-financial-need student, so a maximum-need student. So based on that information, she would be offered a federal Pell Grant for the year in the amount of $7,395, half for the fall, half for the spring. Additionally, because she's a second-year student, she would also be offered the federal direct subsidized and unsubsidized student loans. Because she's a sophomore, her loan amounts are a little higher than a first-year students were. And Elizabeth had provided those breakouts in an earlier slide. And so her unmet need is $7,341. Again, she could qualify for the Federal Supplemental Opportunity Grant, or FSCOG, as we mentioned earlier. Again, Maricopa grants, work-study, scholarships. It just depends upon what the college has available. As Elizabeth mentioned earlier, the Federal Supplemental Opportunity Grant, the Arizona Leap Grant, the Maricopa Grant, those are grants that are first-come, first-served based on eligibility. So they're not guaranteed, or they're not entitlements, as the federal Pell Grant and student loans are. And so that's why it's not in this particular slide. But some students do have access to those grants to make their unmet need a little bit lower. Again, as a reminder, the actual cost that students, in both of these cases, the student loans by themselves would be more than enough to cover tuition, books and fees for a full-time student in Maricopa, a resident student. So the other additional funds that the students can utilize would help with other things, such as living expenses, because some students might reduce their workload in order to cover expenses, possibly help pay for daycare for students like Jamie that might need assistance with that. The district has also partnered with folks to help cover some of those daycare expenses with various grants and stuff. So sometimes those things would pop up as well. So students have lots of options that the financial aid offices at the district and the campuses help students to utilize to help maximize their academic success both on and off-campus. And so I'm actually going to now pass it on to Ms. Annette Lenders, our District Director of Financial Aid. And she can walk through our communication plans and how students can help maintain their eligibility for these financial aid funds, and to talk about the cohort default rate and some of what's coming down in the future. Ms. Annette?
Thank you, Kat. Good afternoon, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and guests. My name is Annette Lenders, District Director of Financial Aid Operations and Compliance. So the first thing we'll talk about is student communications. And we have developed a personalized and automated series of strategic communications that follow the student through their individual life cycle. Communications are managed through our Customer Relationship Management Tool, which is what CRM stands for, throughout the financial aid process. So a series of strategic communications are sent to students based on where the student is in their financial aid and enrollment life cycle. So the communication starts with a welcome message once a student completes a FAFSA. We receive that FAFSA. The student receives a notification on what they need to do for next steps, if they need to apply for admission, if they need to enroll in classes, or if they have other things associated to their financial aid process or financial aid application. And then those communications go through the entire life cycle until they receive a dispersment notification that their funds have posted to their account. New-to-college students who file a FAFSA receive an estimated award letter. So this is something that Maricopa implemented. Kat, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was three years ago where we started sending estimated award letters. Our target date is December. So we generally start sending estimated award letters at the end of December. And the reason is to help students make informed decisions as they determine where they're planning to attend college by the May 1st priority decision date, which is a national priority decision date across institutions of higher education. So we want to be at the table as students are making those decisions so that they understand where their most affordable option is. Once students are enrolled and we've confirmed eligibility, then students receive an official award letter. Generally, it just depends on where they are in the life cycle, and if they've registered for classes, and we have their enrollment status, and they've submitted all of their documentations. So any time between, could be February all the way up through August, when classes start. Elsa, if you could go to the next slide, please. Satisfactory academic progress. First, I'll explain a little bit what satisfactory academic progress is. There are actually two components generally to a satisfactory academic progress. You have an academic progress that is generally administered by Registered Admissions and Records. That's basically program eligibility, and students must meet minimum academic standards to remain in a program of study. And then through the U.S. Department of Education, institutions of higher education are required to have a federal satisfactory academic progress for students who participate in federal student aid programs. And so satisfactory academic progress is required by law under the Higher Education Act. And an institution must establish a reasonable satisfactory academic progress policy for determining whether an otherwise-eligible student is making progress towards his or her educational program. And the policy must have a quantitative, which our quantitative measure is pace of progression. Pace of progression is calculated by dividing the number of cumulative credit hours attempted by the student by the number of credit hours earned. And the policy must also have a qualitative component, which Maricopa uses grade-point average as the qualitative component to measure satisfactory academic progress. 21% of financial aid students were on a SAT status of either not meets or warning. And so you can see 79% of our students are meeting satisfactory academic progress. Our requirements are 2.0 and 67% completion. So students must be completing at least 2/3 of their attempted coursework at any Maricopa college. And we did implement a warning period two years ago. So students have one semester of eligibility. The first time a student fails to meet satisfactory academic progress standards, whether it's GPA or pace of progression, the student is eligible for one semester of a warning status. And in that warning status, the students are encouraged, the colleges work with students to identify resources, academic resources, tutors, to help them meet SAT by the end of that payment period semester, I apologize for the terminology. So if the student is not meeting by the end of that semester of warning, then the student has the option to appeal. If the student has extenuating circumstances, then the student is granted an appeal and placed on what's called probation status. The student may continue to receive financial aid as long as the student is following an academic plan that has been developed through advising, and they continue to progress towards their degree requirements. The only exception to that is if a student is unable, mathematically unable, to complete a program within 150% of the program requirements, the student is no longer eligible. And what that means is if a student is in a 60-credit associate's degree program and they have attempted 90 credits, they're no longer eligible to receive financial aid because they have already attempted 150% of the program requirements. Next slide, please, Elsa. So the future of federal student aid, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of exceptions during the pandemic. I'll go over just a few of those here. Some of the major changes that are happening in the FAFSA Simplification Act is replacing the expected family contribution with what's called the Student Aid Index. And so the intent by the department is to expand access to federal student aid and to streamline the FAFSA form. So some of the things that have already happened to streamline the FAFSA form is that the Selective Service requirement has been removed, as has the option to register with the Selective Service. So in the past, if a student had not registered with Selective Service during the time, they were required to register under federal law, then the student was ineligible for financial aid, for federal student aid. And so now that requirement has been removed, as has the drug conviction if the student had been convicted of a drug-related charge. So those are two that have happened, and then there's there's expansion of the federal Pell Grant for students who are incarcerated and the student loan debt relief. The student loan debt relief is actually blocked right now. Courts have issued orders blocking the student debt relief program. As a result, the department is not accepting applications, but they are seeking to overturn the block. The student loan payment pause will be extended until the litigation is over. So payments will restart 60 days once the litigation is resolved and there's a decision made. If the debt relief program is not implemented and the litigation has not been resolved by June 30th, 2023, then payments will resume 60 days after. So right now, students are still in deferment. Student loans have been in deferment since 2020. So right now, they continue to be in deferment. The First Start Initiative, the First Start Initiative was implemented on April 6. And so the First Start is designed to help eligible student loan borrowers who are in default. So the purpose of this was to help students who had gone into default prior to the pandemic. So basically, students who had gone into default during the pandemic received a pass, basically, because there were no payments due. So the department was implemented, the First Start, to help students who went into default prior to the pandemic. So these students are eligible to basically reverse their loans that are currently in default and go back into good standing and are eligible to borrow additional loan funds if they choose to go back to school. And replacing the expected family contribution with the Student Aid Index is basically a different, it's a different calculation to measure a student's ability to pay for college. So there is a change in the methodology. The new need-analysis formula removes the number of family members from the calculation and also allows, it implements a separate eligibility determination criteria for Pell Grants. So we can definitely link more information to that in the document, but it's probably too complicated to go into here. And then just expanding access for students to to access higher education. And then federal direct loans, the lifetime limit for federal subsidized loan was repealed. So students can receive subsidized loans of up to 150% of the program length. So basically, the terminology, it was the subsidized usage limit. So that has been repealed, and then again, streamlining the FAFSA form. So there continues to be additional exceptions and additions to the FAFSA Simplification Act. That is basically the department looking to expand access and streamline a lot of the red tape that's associated to federal student aid and students accessing federal student aid. Next slide, please, Elsa. Next slide, please. And next, we're just going to briefly discuss Maricopa's cohort default rates. Historically, Maricopa was on the high end and exceeding national averages for community colleges in default. And Maricopa contracted with EdAmerica to manage cohort default rates in 2014. And so within, I believe it was the first three years with EdAmerica, Maricopa ended up, I believe, 1.9%. It's on the next slide, but 1.9% below the national average for community colleges and cohort default rates. So that has been extremely effective, obviously. And so that also allows our colleges and our counselors to focus on students who are currently attending so that we can help students understand before they're borrowing, how much they're borrowing, what their repayment is going to look like, what their salary may look like. Are they going to be able to afford the loan payments? What is the return on investment? So rather than having to deal with, not deal with students, but work with students who are going into repayment and graduating, it helps our colleges and our staff focus on students. who are going into repayment and graduating, it helps our colleges and our staff focus on students who are currently attending and help them understand informed borrowing before they, they get to that point. Next slide, please. Yes, so our cumulative cohort default rate is 14.5% compared to 19.3 in 2015. Since the federal student loan payments have been in deferment since 2020, obviously, our cohort default rates are going to be skewed for probably the next five years at least, depending on when students end up going into repayment. So there, there's a lot of questions, obviously. None of us have experienced this before. So we don't really know what the future is going to look like when it comes to cohort default rates when students go into repayment, especially when we consider that payments have been in deferment for three years. There's going to be a lot of flexibilities. In the past, students had six months to begin repayment and then they had an additional three months of what was called a grace period. So there's discussions on extending that grace period for students so they're not going to go into default immediately after the nine months. So we expect to have additional information coming from the Department of Education as students go into repayment and analyzing what that looks like based on the past three years of deferment. Next slide, please. And I will hand it back to Dr. Brock. Thank you.
All right, I hope you all feel like financial aid experts now. We now have time for questions. I know that was an extreme amount of information and that really only scratches the surface of financial aid. So I'll go ahead and pause and turn it back to you, President Sullivan, for how you would like to handle the question section. And I will be the one who screens the questions and enhance them to be appropriate party.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Thank you very much and thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate all of the information. Of course, with the information, it always just generates more questions as in, what does this mean? Well, why is it that way? How can you determine that a single mother who doesn't get any subsidy only spends $10,000 or is calculated to get, I think it was, what, $10,000 for food and housing? I mean, obviously, that's ridiculous. So, you know, raises all sorts of interesting thoughts and questions. Before I go to the other board members, I did want to ask one question. On the email you sent to the board members on February 10th, you mentioned that supplemental financial aid reference sheet. Can you tell me what its status is? I don't recall having seen it, but I'm sure it's in the works to, can you give us a status report on that? When we'll be receiving that, please?
Uh, it is ready to go now. And I believe that Elsa has the link to share with you all. And we are hoping that it will be a living document. We have, I think there are probably forty or fifty questions and answers on there and we can continue to add to that document as questions surface.
Okay, and how, when you bring forth that information, I guess this is a process question. As we go through that and we, it may generate more questions. What is the plan for us to work with you to get the answers to that question? So we're all in the same place?
Um, I would think it would just go through the normal channels that questions currently go through. And then once I receive it, we would answer the questions, get it back to the entire board and then make sure it's added to that document.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll make sure we look into that a little further. And the other piece would just be how quickly we get the information. So, so maybe depending as we move into our Q and A here, whether we need another session on this or not. But I'm going to wait a while before I ask that question. So with that, board members, I'm going to kind of do a, an alpha thing of roll call instead of opening it up generally. Let me start with you, Mr. Burnett, do you have any comments or questions?
I'll writing notes, but I think I will have some in a few minutes. I'd just like to listen some more.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
Just a question, I think. And it goes back to the FAFSA Simplification Act and the new changes that are coming in 24, 25. At the recent ACCT meeting in Washington, there was a great deal of allusion to additional changes coming to FAFSA that are being explored congressionally and through the Department of that. Do you, are, are we in the loop on that? Are you tracking any of that? Is there information coming? I don't know exactly who on the team to ask this of, but is our team monitoring what those potential changes or requests for changes might be to the FAFSA?
This is Keisha, thank you for that question. Yes, and in fact, we just had Annette Lenders who presented at a conference this past week in Washington DC working with policymakers and legislators on the changes that are moving forward. She is one of our Maricopa's certified financial aid experts. And so she keeps up on the changes as they're being developed and even is able to inform policy in certain instances.
Great, okay, thank you, that, that's helpful. As, as that moves along and I, when, when it comes to Dr. Norene's term to, time to speak, I know he'll talk more eloquently than I am about this. But I, I know there's a continued need for simplifying that and there are these changes coming. But as you see significant changes happening, just keeping the board in the loop on those, I think, might be very useful.
Absolutely, we'll be sure to keep you all updated on those changes as they move through.
Thank you, that's it, President Sullivan.
Thank you. And just to add on to that, I mean, certainly, we have opportunities as governing board members to talk with our congressional leaders, as many of you do. And so when we are aware that something's in the, in process or in the loop, we have opportunities to provide our voice. So please look at us as allies in supporting changes. And that would be another reason why we would want to be aware of what's going through the, the channels. They're not just waiting until the end, but maybe we have some opportunity to contribute to them being successful. So that would be something I would add to what Ms. Bittersmith asked. Ms. Butler, do you have any comments or questions?
I do, thank you, President Sullivan. And thanks for this presentation, it really was very informative. I'm concerned about Arizona's low percentage of seniors who complete the FAFSA or the FAFSA, and I'm wondering if we, if, if we know what some of the factors are that are contributing to that low completion rate?
Uh, we do have some ideas, although we need to dive in a little bit more. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it to Catherine, who has done a lot of work before her time in Maricopa, was very engaged in statewide efforts as well. And she can give a little bit of insight in that, on that topic.
Hi, good afternoon, Catherine, again. So I think, you know, financial aid can be a cumbersome process for folks who have never done it before. You have a variety of factors. You have students who don't think they'll qualify for anything, so they just kind of opt out for doing it. You have some parents who don't want to provide their financial information on a document, either to not share it with your students or to not share it with anyone else. And so they choose to pay out of pocket. You have some students that they struggle because they might be financially independent, living on their own, paying their own bills. But because of the federal regulations on who's required to finance, to fill out a financial aid application, they may be, they may be asked to put their parent information on there and their parents don't want to provide it, right? And they struggle. And it's one of those arcane federal regs that we have to follow. So sometimes that's a complication or a struggle for some students. So there's a variety of things that we combat. With the efforts that Dr. Brock mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, with the colleges partnering with high schools to help those students and families complete the financial aid application, with the virtual appointments that both the colleges and the district teams make, we try to mitigate as much of that as we can. There's also a statewide group that Maricopa is participating in to help develop some more statewide efforts into what we can do to help connect students to the financial aid application and encourage an increase in applications. I also think recently with some of the aid from the pandemic and some other things that have come out, some students just haven't applied, right? But I think you might see some of that change and now that some of that aid is going to be going away and they'll need to look at additional resources.
May I add something to that?
Please, go ahead.
I, I think another factor is that Arizona has the highest student or counselor to student ratio in the country. We have over 350 students to, to a counselor. And added to that, that the counselors get no real training on, on financial aid or the FAFSA or how to, how to do the FAFSA or how to help the students. So until we can get some of those things changed, I think we're still going to, we're always going to lag behind until we get some of the counselors, the student teacher, the student counselor ratio reduced and get the counselor some more training.
Thank you, Dr. Norene.
I might add one more comment to the points that both Dr. Brock and Catherine have made. I think there's also some concerted statewide effort underway to expand FAFSA completion statewide. I know Dr. Brock's part of those groups as well as some of our other financial aid professionals. So there's recognition within the state that this is a high need and high impact area on college-going behaviors in students. And so there is some statewide work that we're engaged in to help raise those numbers within our institutions, but also across the state.
Thank you. As a reminder, everyone, before you speak, can you identify who you are? I, I know that not everyone has the ability to see who's speaking, so it would be very helpful to, to the conversation. I would appreciate it. Ms. Butler, do you have any further comments or questions on this?
No, that answered my question, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Well, since I work, my paying job is working with an organization that does a lot of FAFSA stuff. I would agree with what the speaker just indicated. Parents are a huge stumbling block to this. And quite honestly, especially it seems like parents in Arizona. And we have a lot of rural areas in Arizona where parents are extremely reticent to give out their financial information. So it makes, and the poor student, we've, we've run into students who are, whose parents are divorced and mom will give the information, but dad won't. And there's just so many factors that contribute to this. And it would be so wonderful if the, I don't know how they would do it, but it would be so wonderful if the federal government could figure out a different way to calculate aid besides parents' income. That would be great. But my question is, I recently heard that there is, and I don't know whether this is true or not, but I recently heard that there is a limit to the amount of money that students can borrow through, through student aid, I guess. And that when they reach that limit, parents are expected to take out a parent plus loan. Is that true?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Davis. There is a limit, an aggregate limit.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Apologies, this is Keisha Brock and I'll be fielding all the questions. Yeah.
Okay.
There is, okay, good. There is an aggregate limit that we talked about. I think it was in one of the slides, the exact dollar amount. But I can ask Catherine to jump in again and she can talk about whether or not they then must go to a parent plus loan. I don't believe that's the case, but let me ask Kat to jump in.
Hi, this is Catherine. Yeah, so what you're talking about is using a parent loan or a private loan to, to close the unmet need gap. So you're not going to see that here at the community colleges because our aid, as I mentioned earlier, is enough to cover tuition books and fees. But often at a university where the cost of attendance is greater, you'll see that the student will be offered their maximum amount of loans that they can take out in a, in a year in their name. And then any unmet need, the university will then, will offer to the parent in the form of a parent loan that the parent could then choose to apply for to help the student cover their costs. And the parent loan is very different because it's not guaranteed aid the way a student loan would be. They would have to apply and get approved. So it's, you don't see it too much here at the community colleges.
Well, thank you for answering the question. I, I don't remember that being a case when I was going to college and I thought, wow, this is, this is kind of sad because I just can't imagine, you know, a lot of parents saying, oh yeah, let me pick up the, let me pick up the loan for you to go to, to go to school. So thank you for clarifying that.
Sure, and earlier in the slides, there was a slide that Elizabeth did provide that did have the loan limits that showed the annual limits for the first, for a freshman sophomore student and then the maximum that they could borrow. So there are yearly limits and there are lifetime limits.
Okay, I, I remember seeing that slide and I still kept hoping that it wasn't the case that parents had to pick up the, pick up the slack, but I guess that kind of is. So thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Norene, I know from some emails I've seen that you probably have a number of questions. So what I'd like to do is ask Ms. Smith and Dr. Thor, and I'll defer my time to you, but ask Ms. Smith their question, Dr. Thor, if any questions, and then move to you. And I think depending on the time, we could probably give you a number of minutes to ask your questions. So with that, Ms. Smith, do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a very minor question. When GPA was referenced as a qualitative measure, my ears just perked up for a second because I was wondering how that was qualitative. Did I miss here or do you mind just briefly explaining that?
Thank you for that. This is Keisha and I'm going to ask Annette Lenders to jump in.
Thank you, Dr. Brock. My name is Annette Lenders, District Director for Digital Aid Operations and Compliance. And yes, you did hear correctly. GPA, cumulative GPA is used as a qualitative measure to determine satisfactory academic progress. So the, the requirement by the Department of Education is that institutions have a qualitative and a quantitative measure to determine satisfactory academic progress towards degree, degree completion.
Okay, and I don't want to belabor the point, but GPA to me seems numerical. So how is it qualitative?
It's qualitative based on the policy by the Department of Education. So that's just language that I copied from their policy. I would agree with you that it's numerical and it would be quantitative. But they define it as qualitative in the Federal Student Aid Handbook. I can share, I can share the text with you if you would like me to.
Oh, sure, yeah, that would be great. And then my only other question would be, do we have at the district level a breakdown of students in different, what would be the right term, students by family income? So for example, do we know that 50% of our students are making X amount in their family or less? I just wanted, I, when I saw the Pell numbers, that made me readjust my, made me get the sense that I actually don't have a good sense of the socioeconomic diversity of our students and kind of where students land. And so I was wondering, do we have a sense of that, like, you know, X percent of our students, again, make a certain amount or less?
Thank you for that question, this is Keisha Brock. We know, okay, so the numbers are a bit complicated. So we know that 33% of our students complete this, or 38% complete the FAFSA. 33% actually receive some sort of aid. So we know family income information about those students using EFC. However, the other percentage of students, so the 70, 68%, 67% who do not fill out a FAFSA, we do not know that information. And that is something that we've been wanting to get. I know that there are some conversations about pulling information from DES and other tools, but we do not have a good handle on socioeconomic status directly from our. uh, directly from our student information system.
Got it. Thank you. Those are my questions for today. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor?
Uh, thank you, President Sullivan. Um, I also want to thank the uh, team for a very comprehensive and informative uh, presentation. Uh, I was writing questions throughout the presentation and then going back and crossing them out because you answered them uh, subsequently. So what, what was about ten questions is now down to three. Um, I also have a question about the lifetime limits on the direct subsidized loans and the uh, direct unsubsidized loans. Do those li, uh, lifetime limits apply regardless of how many degrees a person completes?
Thank you, Dr. Thor. This is Keisha Brock again. Yes, the lifetime, the aggregate limits apply regardless of how many degrees you're um, pursuing. The annual limits though, do get adjusted as you move through the various um, levels. Um, let me see if Catherine can provide just a little bit more info on that. Catherine?
Yeah, it, and, and let me, before Catherine answers. So someone who's getting uh, say a medical degree or a law degree, uh, it, it is limited in the amount of direct subsidized and unsubsidized loans that they can take out.
So I think the limit is based on, is leveled. So what you saw were the limits for the two-year um, degrees. I'm gonna have Kat jump in.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so then it, it will increase, right? For now that we're offering bachelor's degrees, that aggregate number I think goes up with the levels. But Kat, can you jump in? I don't want to misspeak, Dr. Thor. Can you jump in?
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, this is Catherine Johnson. And yes, the, the limits that we provided in the presentation today, the um, lifetime limits were for undergraduate students. So that would be a student who has not yet achieved a baccalaureate degree. So any undergraduate coursework. Um, if a student enrolls in a graduate program, master's, PhD, law, medical, then there are different um, annual and lifetime loan limits for those programs. But we did not provide that information in the presentation today because we don't offer that level of degree.
I see, okay. Um, but you, did I understand from your answer just now that for our bachelor's programs, that the lifetime limits are not going to be greater than they are for the associate degree programs?
Uh, this is Catherine. Yes, ma'am, you are correct. Those lifetime limits that were provided in the slide, um, that is correct. The annual limits that were provided was for the first two years. And we can make sure, the supplemental document, we can make sure to give you the annual limits for all four years for the colleges that'll be offering baccalaureate programs. We can make sure that that information is included.
Very good, thank you. Um, we have a lot of students who enroll at more than one Maricopa college. How do we handle financial aid for those students?
Thank you, Dr. Thor. This is Keisha again. We did just recently, I think in the last year or two, implement a blanket consortium agreement which allows students to attend and receive financial aid at a home institution and then take courses at another institution and have that be counted in their enrollment. Um, I have experts on deck who can go into much more detail than I just provided, but we do have a process in place to try and make that a less arduous journey for our students who swirl from institution to institution.
Very good, that, that answer is fine, thank you. And my last question has to do with the status of the proposal for uh, short-term PEL for students, say, that are in um, uh, workforce training programs that are not the traditional two-year. Do we know what the status of that is?
Hello, Dr. Thor. This is Keisha again, and I don't know what that status is. I could phone a friend. Let me see if maybe Annette knows the status and if not, we'll have to get back with that, with you on that answer.
That would be fine.
Thank you, Keisha. This is Annette Lenders. Um, there is, there has not been any movement on that. I can send you the latest update, but I have not seen any movement on that. And we were just discussing it in Washington DC last week.
Mm-hmm, that's too bad.
It is.
That's all my questions, President Sullivan.
But thank you, Dr. Thor. And, and one thing that keeps uh, coming up, I'm wondering again, um, Dr. Brock, if there's a way that we can integrate with our Governance Affairs Office to be tracking some of these issues at the federal level or how they're trickling into state so that we can stay apprised of that, uh, those situations? I know short-term uh, Pell Grants was an advocacy effort on behalf of Governing Board Trustees a couple of years ago and, and somehow it wasn't, I mean, it's, it's part of our agenda of what we need to do. So it's, it's always helpful uh, to be apprised as you are of those things. So that would be great if we could make that uh, relationship more uh, consistent in that regard. So we know what's going on there too. So I'd appreciate that, please.
President Sullivan, this is Keisha and I'll make sure to reach out to our Government Relations Team uh, to see how we can get more of the federal student aid legislation on the radar. I know that they do have both a federal and state-level list of legislation that they follow because I serve on that team, but I know it's not all encompassing. So perhaps we can do um, a little bit more work to make sure we add a few more of these um, items to watch.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, it's now. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, before we get to Dr. Dr. Norene, I just wanted to add to, to that answer because ACCT does have a significant amount of that on their platform, which is why I was asking the earlier question about the FAFSA. But I, but I, so we, we need to interact getting their updates to that team as well. And I will, I can work offline to get that done too.
That's right. As a reminder, everyone, Ms. Peter Smith serves on the ACCT's Policy Committee. So um, she's in the know.
So that's why, that's why I asked you my early question.
That's okay. You're doing great. So thank you for, for that. And I think that can assist us in how we think and look at things on, in that level. Well, um, you know, some of you have asked a couple of the questions that I had and I do have some others. But um, I think what I'd like to do now, it's four thirty-seven and we had allocated, gosh, an hour and a half for this conversation. Uh, we may need to go a little longer. Gender review is probably, well, I don't know how long a gender review is going to be, but uh, we don't have an extensive agenda overall. So Dr. Norene, I'm going to turn to you and um, depending on the quantity of questions you have, uh, can you stay within a ten to fifteen minute limit? I say that tongue in cheek, but I'm serious also.
I, I, I can do my best. I'll, I'll start, I'll start with the, the, my big ones first. But first I want to just to thank everybody for the presentation and, and thank the uh, financial aid offices for all the work they do. They really are the unsung heroes of, of our campus. There's no other office who is more student-facing and more federal-facing than, than the financial aid office. And I mean, while they're, I, I don't think there's anybody who probably deals with more tiers except for maybe the counseling office than the financial aid office does with students. So, so thank you guys for what you do. It's, it's remarkable that uh, you know, with all the regulations and, and policies and stuff you have to deal with and still getting the, the money to the students that they need. So again, so thank you for all that. Uh, so one of the, the, one of the biggest questions on my mind is if we go back to the cost of attendance, uh, I think it's on, I'm looking at slide, uh, the original slide eighteen. So, well, it's probably not the slide eighteen on this, but uh, keep going back, back, back. Oh, yeah, that, that'll work. So we, we have, no, this is for a full-time student taking twelve credits or more? Is that, is that what we're basing the, the cost of attendance on?
Dr. Norene, this is Keisha. Um, we, I'm gonna have Elizabeth step in. She has become our expert on cost of attendance. So Elizabeth, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Keisha. This is Elizabeth Carlon. Um, and thank you, Dr. Norene, for the question. So the way the cost of attendance or the budget is built is we, as I mentioned earlier, we created two categories. So one category being students that are attending less than halftime, which would be five credits or less. And we have the second category, which is students that are attending what we call halftime plus, meaning six credits or more. So when the cost of attendance or the budget is built, um, the amounts on here for tuition fees and also books, they are based on a weighted average. So the way we calculated that is we took all of the students in our student information system and we then took the weighted average of those students that were attending six credits or more and the students that were attending five credits or less to determine what the cost of attendance would be. So if a student is attending six credits or more, whether it's eight credits, nine credits, twelve credits, fifteen credits, they would have um, this, one, this same cost of attendance that's displayed here. And if they're attending five credits or less, they would have a much smaller cost of attendance.
Okay, yeah, because, because I guess that's where I have a, a big problem with, especially for our students is for, the way I understand it is that the way the, the federal government looks at a, a full-time student is, is twelve, twelve credits or more. Uh, and so with that tuition and, and fee we have there, it, we're, we're really under budgeting our students. I mean, twelve credits is for, for a whole year is what, two thousand forty dollars? Uh, that's not, not counting fees, not counting, uh, you know, the, whether it's the loan fees or the uh, registration fees or even the course fees. So I, I worry about those students who are trying to take twelve credits or fifteen credits. So if they can get out in, in the two years, how, how do we, how do we package them so that they're, so that we're allocating enough money for them to, to um, to graduate and pay for everything on time?
Sure. So the way the cost of attendance was built, as I said, it was a weighted average. Right now, that weighted average comes out to about ten credits per semester. So we're looking at about twenty credits for the year, right? So it's just under that full-time status that we're referring to when we say twelve or more. So in this case, because um, transportation doesn't really change much, um, food and housing wouldn't change and the personal um, or loan fees amounts would not change. It would really just be, we're talking about a two to three hundred dollar difference in the tuition and fees and books and supplies. So the cost of attendance, the total cost of attendance wouldn't increase by much. And because our tuition and fees are a lot lower than, for example, universities and other private institutions, students are usually able to, you know, their, their gross financial need is able to usually cover their needs here at South Mountain. The reason why we do the cost of attendance the way we do in the way, and the reason why we use weighted average instead of actual costs is because by using the weighted average, we're able to maximize the gift aid that students can receive. There are times, for example, where students uh, have, for example, at Chandler Gilbert, we have the aviation program and students that have, that are enrolled in that program have much larger fees, right? That go with this program. So in this situation, what we have is um, the ability for students to self-identify that their fees are much greater, at which point they can then go through a process to submit. Um, it's like an appeal process, if you will, so that we can adjust or so that the Financial Aid Office at Chandler Gilbert can adjust their cost of attendance to increase their fees to reflect what the true fees are and make that cost of attendance greater in order for the students to be able to use more funding if needed. I hope that answers your question.
It, it does, but I, I, I'm, I'm just focusing right now on, on the tuition and fees part. So you said that, that it's uh, ten credits, so that'd be twenty credits a, a year, correct?
Correct.
So that would be, if we, if we just did tuition, uh, that's seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars. And so we're, we're budgeting eighteen, we're, we're budgeting one hundred and seventy-six dollars for additional um, additional fees, so the registration fee, the course fees and any other fees that they have. I mean, it just, it just seems awfully low. Uh, and especially if we're, if we, we start working for those students that, that students are, that are going to take twelve or more, uh, that tuition and fee number just looks awfully low.
So you're right. Um, it definitely is low based on, you know, the examples that you're giving, but not, the majority of our students are part-time students. And that is why the, the budgets were built that way. In a situation where students have, you know, much larger fees or, you know, are maybe taking a lot more credits, more than twelve, more than fifteen, eighteen perhaps, then those are things that we could always at the campus look at, maybe manually adjusting. But when students are originally awarded or initially awarded, I should say, it's based off of the cost of attendance that's already built in the system.
Okay. And I guess, and I, I understand that. Uh, and I guess that's, I, I have the problem, I have the problem with the system that, the way it's set up. Uh, because if I'm a student and I'm planning to go, you know, take twelve credits, fifteen credits at best and I see this is what, what they're allocating for me, I'm thinking, well, that's not enough. I, I, I can't afford to go because I'm not going to get, uh, my tuition and fee is, is, is much higher. Uh, so I, I guess, I mean, I understand the way it's, it's, the process is, is in place. I just don't agree with the process. And, and I think it's, it's harming some of our students in the, in the amount of money. Because again, uh, this is going to be another fun time when we go through the agenda review. We, we're looking at student fees and I'm looking at student fees. Uh, and we've got one for electric power distribution, which is going to be two hundred and fifty dollars just for that one course. Uh, another one for two hundred and fifty dollars. So we, we have substantial fees for course fees that I don't think is represented in, in our budget. And I, I, I just hope we can, we can take another look at that uh, and, and see how we, we can focus on, on taking care of, making sure that the, the cost of attendance really represents what, what our students or what we want our students or what we'd expect our students to do. Because if they do only have six years uh, to, to, to do this, um, yeah, we, we need to push them more and more to get the, the more credits, the twelve to fif, uh, fifteen credits. So, so that, that was my big one is, is on the tuition.
Dr. Norene, this is Keisha and I just wanted to chime in because you're right. Some of this is the system, and I don't, I don't mean our SIS system or Maricopa. It's a regulatory uh, issue. So we are not permitted to average tuition and fees for full-time students if the majority of our population doesn't support that uh, from a regulatory perspective. Now, we could base costs on actual, but we would then have to do that for every single student, which would be very, very complicated and unmanageable, frankly, in a system our size. Um, and, or we have to average based on our enrollment. So um, I agree, it is um, not ideal uh, working within the confines of what we're required to do from a federal regulation perspective.
So, so, so again, again, everybody knows my frustration with fees. So if this is, if, if we're setting a budget for, for a full-time student and a full-time student is twelve credits or more, why are we not averaging all the full-time students instead of all the students?
Was that, sorry, I didn't understand that. This is Keisha, I didn't understand that question. You, you wanted to know about course fees or with the FAFSA? Okay.
So if we're, if we're working on a budget for a full-time student, then why are, why don't we just calculate the average for all full-time students instead of the average for all students enrolled?
I'm gonna have Annette jump in, who's our compliance expert. But from what I understand, we're not permitted to do it in those, I don't know, let me ask Annette.
Thank you, Dr. Brock. This is Annette Lenders. Um, that's correct, Dr. Brock. We, we have to use one or the other. So we can either average based on our actual population or we use actual costs, which if we used actual, if we went to an actual cost to calculate cost of attendance, we would end up reducing budgets for the majority of our students. So we've looked at this, um, when, when we, when we have to update the budgets every year, we, we look at this to see, is it really reflective of our population? Um, which the only way we're allowed to use an average is if we use the majority of our population. Um, so we can't use the majority of our population for some students and not for others. It has to be consistent and equitable across all of our populations.
So, so I understand how, how with the aviation program, that's, that's an obvious one. But what about some of the other programs that do have substantial fees, but don't, don't create that automatic red flag? How do those students know to ask for the professional discretion from the Financial Aid Office?
So those students are obviously allowed a cost of attendance review.
But how do they know to, how do they know to ask for that?
They wouldn't. Do you know, I don't think we have anybody from Chandler, Chandler Gilbert.
Well, how about just even like dental hygiene or the electrical progress?
Annette, this is Keisha, and I did ask, um, Elizabeth to follow up on that. Elizabeth, can you jump in?
Absolutely, yes, this is Elizabeth Carlon again. So with Chandler Gilbert, yes, it's true, they have a system in place where students can submit an appeal, and then from there, the fees can be adjusted. It is my understanding that, right now, for other programs that may have sizable fees, but not, you know, quite as big as aviation, we don't necessarily have a process in place. Now, there is, our system right now doesn't support the ability to be able to enter, um, you know, for those, for example, the aviation program and things like that, to make manual, or not manual, I should say, automatic adjustments for those specific programs. In talking with FAIT, um, at our district office, there does seem to be an update that's going to be happening here pretty soon, and we're hoping to be able to do something like that. But as of today, we don't have the capability to do that automatically, it would have to be manually. And, for example, at South Mountain Community College and across the district, other campuses, we don't have a process for students to be able to request that fees be increased, because they're not, you know, huge amounts, like the aviation program, for example.
And Dr. Norene, this is Keisha one more time, and Annette has a little bit more to add to that.
Thank you, Dr. Brock, this is Annette Lenders. Um, and I just wanna mention that a cost of attendance review is really only applicable if a student has sufficient financial aid to exceed cost of attendance. So if, if a student applies for, say, a parent plus loan, or a private alternative loan, and they have sufficient funding to exceed cost of attendance, um, then that's a conversation from a financial aid advisor to the student, that if you have additional expenses, that can be a direct communication to a student. We don't wanna advertise to every student that they may qualify for a cost of attendance review if they still have fifteen thousand dollars of unmet need in their current cost of attendance minus their financial aid, because it all is dependent on how much financial aid they have, and if they have sufficient funding to exceed the current cost of attendance that's budgeted.
Okay, uh, yeah, and, I mean, we could, we could go on for, for a few more hours about this, because, you know, as we start to get into the, the promise scholars and, and those kinda things, and how that, uh, how this may impact it. So I'll, I'll follow up with some, some written questions. And, and I think this is just a, a, a real point, that the resources that are needed in our financial aid offices, that, that they need, they, they, they need, the, uh, the financial aid offices need the support. We need to provide them the support that they need, so that we can accurately and adequately fund our students. So, so with that, I, like I said, I've got a lot more other, other detailed questions, and I'll send those, um, I'll, I'll send those, online or, or in a, in written form, uh, so that we can get those, we can get those answers. And I really appreciate you responding to a lot of the questions and, and concerns that I had, and giving me a chance to review the, the slides beforehand, uh, and, and for responding to a lot of the questions and, and concerns I had, uh, initially. So thank you so much.
President Sullivan, were there other questions?
I was on, I was talking, but I was on mute, so I apologize. Please accept my apology. What I'd like to say is, uh, I think this has been a tremendous benefit to all the board members in having a better understanding or appreciation of the issues that impact our students around financial aid, and certainly the efforts that, um, you all make to appreciate, to understand and, and respond onto our curiosities, as well as our interests in this area. And thank you for the very thorough presentation this evening. I will, uh, like to move us on, we do have agenda review, but, um, I, I kinda, I'd like to leave the door open for more discussion on this. I mean, you raised some interesting things that come at a strategic level, thinking of, at it from a board level, and that would be, uh, certainly the advocacy efforts that we can engage in, that support changes in, in, uh, bigger policies that can impact our students. Then there's the efforts, do our own policies and over which we have, uh, conversations, and we'll do more in the future, reflect interests as well as new accommodations and different things. Also, what is our system prepared to do, and, and what, uh, resources do we need to ensure that our systems, uh, technicology systems and others are responding to the ever-changing landscape? And, uh, then what are our resource allocations? Then it comes down to advisors, and then the relationships with high schools. So there are elements, uh, where board can be engaged in working with you to ensure that your efforts are, are not so, uh, stressful, that we can't contribute to, to talking with you about some relief or some shared, uh, interest that can lead to better outcomes for our students. That, um, so that being said, I, I, you know, that's where I think perhaps we can go in the future. And I appreciate you being willing to accommodate our questions, no matter how far in the weeds sometimes we get, because it just enhances our recognition of what you all do every day on behalf of our students, and how you're working to ensure that they can truly achieve their potential, which is where we're all, uh, focused. And, uh, I, I, I want to express my appreciation on behalf of the board, personally, and then on behalf of the board in that effort. So, um, more to come. We will look forward to getting your reference sheet. I know that there will be more Q and A, and we'll look through your answers, but as we move forward in broader and deeper conversations, we hope to do so respectfully and in partnership with you a, as we go forward. So I'd like to say thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And do you have any closing comments for your team and, uh, um, giving us some guidance? And, and again, to all of you this evening, thank you very much. Back to you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Sullivan, and, and again, we, we are always appreciative of this opportunity to, um, discuss some of the, the work that goes on behind the scenes. And as you can see, it's extremely complex, and I would agree with Dr. Norene in that our financial aid, uh, folks from directors down and, and to frontline staff are certainly unsung heroes, and do commiserate with students and, and often to shoulders that they cry on when, you know, they're struggling to find ways to do this. And so, um, you know, some, clearly some of the, the, the questions have been raised. We have instances that are outliers in, in each direction, and I think it's important, as Dr. Norene pointed out, that we, we need to be prepared to sit with those students that are in programs where there's high fees, um, as a, as a part of the program that they're in, and, um, be ready to let them know how they can, you know, help cover those costs through additional financial aid or scholarship or grant efforts that are possibly outside of the, the fast-forward process. So, um, we're all on board for that. But one thing that is certainly clear is that what the folks who presented here, and the many people who aren't here tonight, who are, are on financial aid, um, you know, uh, function throughout our organization, they certainly care for our students, and they are looking out for their interests and try to get them as, as much as they can get them to help cover the cost of their education, and clearly access is extremely important. As we were having this discussion, um, as a board previously around fees, we had talked about the formation of a task force, and, um, I, I think what we, we had hoped to be able to roll something out this evening, we may be able to discuss some aspects of it, and I may ask Bettina to do that, but we wanted that, the task force to also be informed by the types of questions that we would receive here tonight. And I know that we are also on tap on, uh, Friday to have a conversation with our governing board around, um, shared governance and participation on, on task force and committees across our system. And so, um, with that, Bettina, is there anything that you would like to, um, you know, to, to, to share at this point, or is a little premature?
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. I think, um, we're still in the formation phase, but I, I'll share at least what problem we think we're going to try to solve, based on the conversations we had today and have had previously. And I think it's a task force that's gonna continue to refine the work of the first course fees task force, to really look at some of the student-impacting, um, considerations that you brought up today and have been brought up in prior conversations. So standardizations of business processes around establishing course fees, uh, expansion of our transparency efforts around fees for students, and really an evaluation of policies to support course fee refunds and exception processes. I think the one thing that I would add right now is awareness for students, um, on high, programs with high course fees, um, because maybe that's a consideration that you wouldn't know until you're enrolling, and that's become very evident, I think, through some of the points that Dr. Norene's raised. And so that's what we believe to be the scope of the work, that we're hoping to engage a cross-functional, uh, collaborative work team on digging a little deeper into that problem with the hope of, uh, doing some work in time to impact the next enrollment cycle potentially in spring of twenty-four.
Thank you, Bettina, and that concludes my remarks, excuse me, President Sullivan. I wanna thank the, the team for the hard work and energy, and that they committed into this, um, presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all again for this. It's five PM, according to my clock. And, uh, how about if we take a few minutes and, uh, in case you need to grab a glass of water or whatever, and I will call the meeting to order in about five minutes. So that would be about five oh six, if that gives everyone enough time to step away and come back. Don't, don't go away, but, uh, if you choose to step away for a few minutes, I'll communicate in about five more minutes. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Our five minutes have gone by, and now we're set to, um, start our agenda review. I'm going to remind everyone again that we are live captioning our meetings, so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting, where you'll find a link, and please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. At this time, I call to order the governing board agenda review for our meeting to be, which is scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. For the record, I'm going to call roll for, of our board members, and I'll start again with our student trustee, Mr. Lynn Burnett. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Butler?
Present.
Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis, are you present? Sure, she'll be back with us in a minute.
I am present, I couldn't figure out how to get the mute thing off.
I, I've been that, down that road many times. Dr. Norene?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, and with my presence again, all seven board members are present, including, and includes our student trustee, Mr. Burnett. So for, uh, after calling roll, I'm going to go through our agenda for the February twenty-twenty-eight meeting. We will have the general, uh, progression of activities, but we will start with a work session on our proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, to be presented by Ms. Greenio, I believe. So stay tuned for that. And from there, we will move on to our regular meeting, and it will be called to order, pledge allegiance. And one thing you may note in our agenda is that we have, in fact, moved our student life reports to the top of the list, and we'll be looking forward to hearing from Australia Mountain Community College on February twenty-eighth. We will then move to our consent agenda, and, excuse me, citizens interim, and then our consent agenda, and let me now read the items on the list. So, uh, what first would be item two on the agenda is approval of the acceptance of a new two-year grant from the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System, otherwise known as CPB, South Maricopa County Community College District for the American Rescue Plan Home and Community-Based Services Workforce Development Career Education and Training Program from March one, twenty twenty-three to September thirty, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of twenty-five million, seven hundred thousand dollars. So mouthful. Uh, board members, are there any comments or questions? Being done, we move to the next item, approval of acceptance of new grant award from the U.S. Department of Education to Phoenix College for the College Success Initiative, Supporting Student Housing and Basic Needs to Increase Post-Secondary Retention and Completion Rates Project in the Amount of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars for the period from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I, uh, expect that, um, even though it started, it was a matter of paperwork, why we're looking at it now. Uh, board members, do you have any comment or questions on this?
This is Donna Davis. I loved this grant. I thought they did a great job.
Oh, great. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Item four, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting to Rio Salado College for year fifty-three of the community service grant, i.e. KJAS, from October first, twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty-four, in the amount of seven hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. Again, I think the delay in us looking at this now, um, it's been, in effect, has been a matter of paperwork. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
President Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor?
I'd like to ask a question about, uh, both four and five.
Yes, I see five as similar.
The corporation, yeah, the, the Corporation for Public Broadcasting has been funding KJZZ for over fifty years, and KBOC for almost thirty years. And I'm wondering what the trend is in, uh, funding from CPB. Is it increasing, decreasing, staying, uh, stable? What's the experience been the last few years?
Thank you for your question. Um, I want to refer everyone to item five, which is again, approval of the acceptance of a continuation grant from the Corporation for Public Broadcasting to Rio College for year twenty-nine of the community service grant, KBOC, uh, from ten one twenty-two to nine thirty twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars. So with both of those items, Dr. Gonzalez, is there someone who could answer, uh, Dr. Thor's question?
Yes, President Sullivan, Dr. Thor, I'm going to defer to Dr. Kate Smith, uh, to hopefully answer that question for you here.
Yes, this is Kate Smith. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, President Sullivan, Dr. Thor. The funding has mostly been stable for the last few years. So no increase, no significant increase, no significant decrease. And if I may, President Sullivan, if I can give clarification on why we're looking at this now, is because, super, thank you. It's because the, um, CPB will not release any funds until all financial reports are filed. And so this is the time of year when they get filed, and then therefore they give you a two-year cycle, um, for expenditure of the funds.
Okay. Any other comment, board members, in response to that? All right, uh, thank you. I believe this has come up before around timing, but for new board members, it was good for you to provide that clarification. Thank you. Dr. Thor, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Sure. Moving on then to item six, approval of an IGA and governmental agreement between the Maricopa Community College District and the Arizona Board of Regents to participate in a scholarship program that offers funding to military veterans. that offers funding to military veteran spouses through June 30, 2027. Are there any comments or questions on item six? Being done, item seven, approval of acceptance of IGA intergovernmental agreement from the Arizona Department of Health Services, the Arizona Biomedical Research Center, awarding funds to the Gateway Community College Center for Entrepreneurial Innovation, or the CEI, Glendale Community College and Phoenix College for the Pilot Program Grants and Equipment Purchases for Community Colleges to Promote Careers in Biomedical Research and Technology in the Amount of $791,437 for the period from the date of Signature 23 through July 18, 2027. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Being done, we'll move to item eight, approval to award a purchase order in the amount of $567,783.88 to Skyline Builders and Restoration to repair pedestrian walkways and fire lanes at Scottsdale Community College. Are there any comments or questions? Being done, we move to number nine, approval of purchase order to JRM Environmental in the Amount of $935,000 for hazardous, excuse me, for hazardous material abatement and general demolition associated with the gymnasium renovation project at Phoenix College. Are there any comments or questions? Moving to item 10, approval of support for Puma North America's application to become a usage-driven site within Foreign Trade Zone Number 75. Are there any comments or questions on that, board members? Being done, item 11, approval of curriculum courses. We have 116 deletions, 174 new, and 56 modifications. In the occupational programs, we have 41 modifications, 10 new, and one deletion. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Being done, moving to item 12, approval of proposed course fee changes fall semester fiscal year 2324. Board members, are there any comments or questions?
Well, of course.
I was gonna, I was pausing longer for you.
I, I was waiting to see if there's anybody else.
Okay. So yeah.
Well, thank you. First of all, first of all, I want to, I want to thank some of the schools for the remarkable work they've done to, to reduce the cost of, of education for some of the students. Estrella Mountain, they reduced one of their art classes to zero for their, their course fees. Gateway reduced some of their economic classes and saved the students about $200 in, in one of the classes. And in nine, they, they reduced the cost of, of of education to nine classes in their, in the business department. And Glendale lowered their, their cost than their statistics class and Paradise Valley reduced the cost of their, their students attendance in 12 classes. So I want to congratulate all of them for all the work that they did to help reduce the cost for our students to, to come to school. The other thing I just want to point out is that I noticed that a lot of the fees, not a lot, there's a number of the fees that are, are being charged for new online books. And I know that there's some programs and at the, at the meeting we had in DC this week, met with a couple of representatives of like, see, what is it? CJM or the, the one publisher, that they have, they have programs now that for one price, the students can have access to their whole library of books. SinGage. So SinGage has a program for, for $69. The student can have access to any ebook that they, that they need. And then so does Pearson. Pearson has a similar program where for one price they have access to, to all the, all the books in their, in their library. So I'm, I'm just wondering how we can leverage that. So, because I see some of these courses that are, that are, that they're using the, the course fees to pay for the books. And if we just worked with those, with those publishers, that we could get those students multiple books for the same price. And I just want to know if we can, how we can leverage some of that or if there's any talk about leveraging some of those kind of programs.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. I think that's a question for Dr. Gonzalez and his team. And if they, they would like to answer that now, that's fine, or maybe they could answer later in an email to us. But Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sullivan and Dr. Narini. I, I think that would be a question that unless somebody, I think Bettina's a sponsor on this one, feels comfortable in asking. But, you know, our, I know that our faculty, when, when they're deciding on which textbooks to use or the, the manner in which students can access them, take those things into consideration. We've, as you all know, we've, we've saved students millions of dollars by using the open educational resources in many of our courses as well. So there's certainly a commitment to do that. And Bettina, is there anything that you would add to that? And I'm not aware of any special committee or task force that's currently going on that is looking at that amongst our faculty ranks. I mean, that's not to say that it's not happening at a department level or perhaps even a division or college level.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. You're correct. So first of all, the selection of course books is an academic freedom item that is obviously the purview of the faculty teaching those individual sections at those colleges. But in addition to that, I think inclusive access, which is generally products like SinGage and Pearson are we are not, we have not engaged in any conversations about comprehensive access because we are very much committed to our open educational resource work in addition to providing the option of individual courses. But we can do, I can reach back out and consult with some of our faculty leadership as well as our open educational resource lead, Dr. Lisa Young, for more information on that and get that back to the board.
Yeah, thank you. And what I was thinking initially is that not, not asking instructors to, to change the coursework, I'm just saying that there may be a, a business course who's using a SinGage book and a psychology course who's also using a SinGage book, just because that's the one that they choose. How do we get, how do we get the, the student to understand that there's a, there's a cost savings if we can, if we can get them that, that, that package? Does that make sense? And we are not, I'm not asking the professor to, to change the books to, to meet anything, just that if they just happen to be using the same publisher, then I think there's an opportunity for students to save lots of money.
Thank you, Dr. Narini, for that clarification. And we can look into that, absolutely.
Thank you. And one other thing, I was just going to make a suggestion as I'm looking through the fees. At Gateway, they have some cosmetology classes. They're, they're asking for a, a fee increase to, to make up for the 12 to 20% increase of of the cost of materials, yet they're asking for an increase of anywhere from 50 to 75% of the, the previous course fee. So I'm going to submit my list of questions with some recommendations. If we can pass that on to, to, to the Gateway's program, again, for some of these students to, to keep their, the cost in, in, in check. Because like I said, if the fees have gone, if the cost of material has gone up 20%, I, I don't think we need to raise the, the fees by 60 to, to 75%. So that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Mrs. Sullivan, if I might, I did
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
This is Bettina. Again, I did want to add also that within the course fees that were submitted, Glendale Community Colleges have withdrawn two course fees for EDU 277 and SPF 277 for consideration at this time. And so we'll provide an updated board item that includes that removal.
Thank you. And I just said, I did have one more, one more question. And this relates to our, our new bachelor's degree program in teaching. We've got a couple student teaching classes there that we're, we're asking for a $500 fee. So are, are students also paying tuition in addition to the, to the $500 fee? And that's, I think that's, that's at Glendale.
Dr. Narini, this is Bettina Solis again. They are. And those courses actually are the courses in which the fees are going to be withdrawn at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Narini, were you also responding to item 13 or asking questions around approval of tuition and fee schedule for fiscal year 2324?
No, just the course fees.
Okay, just the course fees. All right. So I just stated number 13 on our consent agenda for our next meeting. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that item?
President Sullivan, I, I, I think it's more of a comment than a question. Obviously, this reflects above our decision from December, the new fee schedule. But I just want to reminder, at some point prior to our board meeting approval of this, I think it would be helpful for the board to understand how students will be communicated with in terms of the, of a new, the new tuition structure.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith, for your comment. And certainly, Dr. Gonzalez, you've been aware that that was part of our decision or our vote. So I, if you'd like to answer that now, that would be great, or you just want to reinforce that in another way, that would be fine, too.
We'll do both. I'll provide anyone an opportunity, whether it's Bettina or, or if we have Chuck Coolidge on that, that might be able to respond to anything that's, that's already occurred, but we'll certainly be able to provide a, a more comprehensive answer to that. Bettina or Chuck? I'm not sure if Chuck is with us this evening.
Dr. Gonzalez, this is Bettina again. So as part of our ongoing communication strategy that's led by Dr. Brock and her team, students who start enrolling in courses will receive notifications about the tuition increases. But I also believe that there was some plan to provide updated information on some of our web resources regarding the increase in tuition and fees moving into the enrollment cycle that will start in March. Beyond that, I, I don't know, I'm not familiar with any of the work that Chuck and the Marketing and Public Relations Group might be doing.
And, and that, President Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez, I, we can get that as an, an email or follow-up to the board. I just wanted to put that back on the radar screen.
Thank you. We will do that.
Thank you. Board members, as I conclude our conversations around the consent agenda, do you have any comments or questions based on further reflection? Okay, being done, you'll note on our agenda that there will be no action items at the meeting. We will move into then our first read and information items. And in addition to the employment and separations report, there is a placeholder for us to do a first read around the strategic plan. And if, in fact, we don't actually have a first read around a strategic plan, we may, we will be able to give an update, Dr. Gonzalez, at this, in this placeholder around the status of the strategic plan, et cetera. So whether it's a first read or whether it's information, that's what we will do at that meeting. We'll then move into the monitoring reports, have our community reports and reinforce and establish meetings, next meeting dates. So with that, I'd also like to comment that on Friday, February 17, the board will have another opportunity to meet with the CC and will be taking on, again, another discussion around the strategic plan. We were so, I, I feel I can speak on behalf of the board that we were very excited to have had the last opportunity to work together with everyone and look forward very much to the 17th. We're disappointed for those folks who will not be able to be with us, but we will certainly work hard to communicate what transpires that day to, to all. With that, I don't have any other comments on the upcoming board meeting. Just for the good of the order, board members, do you have any other comments?
This is Donna Davis. I just have a question. The budget stuff that was at the end of our board packet, is that what's going to be at the beginning of this meeting?
Beginning of the, the next meeting, the 28th meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Grineo, excuse me, Dr. Gonzalez? I'm looking through my report and I don't have budget material.
President Sullivan, if I may, this is Kim Grineo, Vice Chancellor for Business Services. I think what Ms. Davis is referring to is probably the burn report, which is the one report that we provide every month. That is part of the monitoring reports that just gives a status update. So what we'll have next, or not next month, at our work session on the 28th of February will be a preview of the budget or the proposed budget for fiscal year 24.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for asking. Sure. Thank you for asking the questions. You know, I mean, some, we go along and I'm thinking budget. Of course, we have the monitoring report, but I appreciate your asking for the clarification on that. So again, any other comment or question from board members? Being done, I'm going to adjourn our work session and our agenda review for the evening. So thank you, everyone, and happy Valentine's Day. With the evening you have left, go enjoy. So thank you all for your attention and we'll see you soon. Thank you.